Are you here? Did you want to say something?
He's not in his regular seat over there, is he?
It was hard to say mister, I'm sorry.
Once a chief, always a chief.
Well, thank you very much. This recruiting video was really something that was put together the entire police department and their cooperation as well as a city staff. And Mackenzie Williams did a phenomenal job and she donated her time and expertise and talents to the production of this video, which was, I think, is really going to benefit us in attracting quality officers in the future. I think it's going to be able to highlight and spotlight the city as a place for qualified individuals to come to and have a career here. So, I'm kind of excited to see also what you think of it because we're very proud of it. We're very proud of Mackenzie and her talents are just, well, let the film speak for itself. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay. So, let's roll it. Wow, thank you very much. If I was a little younger, I'd join up. Okay, are there any other comments about the video?
I was just gonna say it was outstanding. Felt like we could have our own cops show.
Yeah.
That's very good. Congratulations on doing such a good job.
Yes, thank you.
It's very professional. Very, very well done.
Okay. So, we'll move on to a swearing-in ceremony for new officers and I'll again refer this to Mr. Palazzo.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Before I turn this over to our city clerk, Robin Patch, I'd like to just briefly say something about the officers that we're going to be swearing in this evening so you get to know them a little bit. And I guess we should ask Mr. Berry, Officer Asbury, and Officer Pearson to join us up here. Just to get to know the officers here this evening, I'm gonna introduce Chief Berry first. Chief Berry is our interim police chief. As we know, Chief Plack is retired. Mr. Berry's going to come and stay with us for a few months, help us recruit a new police chief and keep the police department running in a forward direction. Mr. Berry has about 40 years of police experience, working up through the ranks, did a fairly long stint in Yuba City. Before that, he was in the Bay Area, I believe, in Petaluma. And from Yuba City, he launched his chief career in the town of Truckee, California. Was there for several years before his retirement. In retirement, he's been, you know, working with, as an interim chief and worked a little bit with some consultants, international consultants in the police services. He's since has done a interim appointment with Nevada City. And I heard about him being an interim there and tracked him down and glad that he could join us here in Crescent City for a few months. His background includes Leadership Academy, FBI National Academy, master's degree in management and post-command college. So, it was a very, well, good experience. Officer Asbury, good evening. How are you? Officer Asbury, it is a great pleasure to introduce Officer Asbury this evening. She joined the city in 2011 as our records specialist and she came to us from Riedel Police Department. She has actually managed our records and has done a remarkable job in that position over the years. And I think one day she decided that she wanted to get out from behind that desk and get on the street and she came and decided that she would like to take a leave of absence and put herself through the police academy, took six months off and did that. And past the academy, flying colors. And she's applied for a police officer position and we've picked her up and we're very glad to have her here this evening, starting as an officer. Officer Pearson is going to be sworn in this evening as a reserve officer. Officer Pearson has also lived in the community.
Think all your life or?
And has been working at our city pool as a lifeguard. And I don't have the number of years that you've been there. However, he's worked his way up to designated head lifeguard and decided to go put himself through the academy as well. Spent six months at the academy and has applied to be a reserve officer with our police department. And I also have some notes here that in the academy, you achieved a 93 percent in the firearms category, which is pretty impressive. We're pleased to have both officers here this evening and Chief Berry. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Patch to have this wearing in. After Ms. Patch swears everyone in, then I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Berry to read the code of ethics and how the officers repeat the code of ethics.
Thank you very much.
Aye, Scott Berry.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
And defend?
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear?
That I will bear.
True faith?
True faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take?
That I take.
This obligation freely?
This obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental preservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well?
That I will well.
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon?
The duties upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
No crying, Mr. Pearson.
[Laughter]
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Alex Pearson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
And defend?
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well?
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon?
The duties upon. Which I'm about to enter.
As in customary at this time, it is appropriate for someone to pin the badges on these new officers. I think you have your daughter here, Sarah. Would like to come forward and pin the badge on mom. I believe you have your mother here for that one. Come back here. This is a custom that I have always done as a police chief and a lot of agencies have done it. But before we get into that, I'd like to recognize the fact that this is my first day and it's kind of nice to hire two people right on. But I have to give credit to Chief Plack because he's the one that set that up and kept the ball rolling and getting these people on. It's important for the department and for the city to have these people here. Step a little closer, they can hear me now. Okay, what I'm gonna have these officers recite is the police officer code of ethics. It's pretty long and it takes all three of the little classes we did and quickens again without leaving out the length that we have. But it's important for these officers, it's important for the officers that are here to support and it's important for the community to hear these words because these are the words that I have followed throughout my career, almost 40 years. I know Chief Plack has followed and the officers of the present state of Michigan Department has followed. And I think it's really important for the young officers who are jumping in the weather that are here in this program that is going on right now, to hear these words because these are the words we uphold as putting the badge on, carrying the gun and how we protect and serve every day, 24/7. And it's important to hear them as well. But if you listen to them, hold these officers accountable. Hold me accountable and hold the community accountable. Would you please raise your right hand? Hold that one. Repeat after me, please. As a law enforcement officer?
As a law enforcement officer.
My fundamental duty is to serve mankind.
My fundamental duty is to serve mankind.
To safeguard lives and property?
To safeguard lives and property.
To protect the innocent against deception?
To protect the innocent against deception.
The weak against oppression or intimidation?
The weak against oppression or intimidation.
And the peaceful against violence or disorder?
And the peaceful against violence and disorder.
And to respect the constitutional rights of all people to liberty, equality, and justice.
And to respect the constitutional rights of all people to liberty, equality, and justice.
I will keep my private life unsullied and an example to all.
I will keep my private life unsullied and an example to all.
Maintain courageous calm in the face of danger?
Maintain courageous calm in the face of danger.
Scorn and ridicule?
Scorn and ridicule.
Develop self-restraint and to be constantly mindful of the welfare of others?
Develop self-restraint and to be constantly mindful of the welfare of others.
Honest in thought indeed in both my personal and official life?
Honest in thought indeed in both my personal and official life.
I will be an exemplary in obeying the laws of the land and the regulations of my department?
I will be exemplary in obeying the laws of the land and the regulations of my department.
Whatever I see or hear of a confidential nature of that is confided to me in the official capacity?
Whatever I see or hear of a confidential nature or that is confided to me in my official capacity.
Will be kept ever secret unless revolution is necessary in the performance of my duty.
Will be kept ever secret unless revelation is necessary in the performance of my duty.
I will never act officiously or permit personal feelings?
I will never act officiously or permit personal feelings.
Predicacies, animosities, or friendships to influence my decision?
Predicacies, animosities, or friendships to influence my decision.
With no compromise for crime and with the relentless prosecution of criminals?
With no compromise for crime and with relentless prosecution of criminals.
I will enforce the law courteously and appropriately without fear or favor?
I will enforce the law courteously and appropriately without fear or favor.
Without malice or ill will, never employing unnecessary force or violence, and never accepting gratuities.
Malice or ill will, never employing unnecessary force or violence, and never accepting gratuities.
Last paragraph is very important. I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith?
I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith.
And I accept it as a public trust to be upheld so long as I am true?
And I accept it as a public trust to be held so long as I am true.
To the ethics of the police service.
To the ethics of the police service.
I will constantly strive to achieve these objectives and ideals?
I will constantly strive to achieve these objectives and ideals.
Dedicating myself before God to my chosen profession, law enforcement.
Dedicating myself before God to my chosen profession, law enforcement. Go ahead, you can repeat that. Dedicating myself before God to my chosen profession, law enforcement.
Congratulations and welcome.
Well, thank you very much. That was a very special ceremony. We have something else that's related, though, Mr. Palazzo?
Yeah, I do want, this evening, like to recognize the explorers and the Explorer Academy. The Explorer Academy is in session this week. There's, I believe, 32 students, attendees, in the academy. And that may be Sergeant Apperson, kind of putting him on the spot here a little bit. May want to say a few words about the academy this year.
Great, Sergeant?
I don't know which way to face. Somebody's getting my back turned on him. So, the Explorer Academy started in 2003. This is right around our 10th academy. We skipped one year, but we are in our 11th year. And I believe our number's 33. 33 this year. Today's our first day. It's gonna go all the way through Saturday. Graduation will be at 3:00 PM at Donort High. Everybody's invited to attend that. It's extremely challenging. Some of these young men and women have not experienced a challenge quite like this. What makes this year unique, the primary difference, is that this is not just for law enforcement explorers this year. We've opened it up. We have, and if you want to raise your hand if I name off your unit, we have fire explorers. Leave your hands up. We have Donort County Sheriff's explorers. We have naval sea cadets. We have Donort ambulance explorers. And we have Crescent City Police explorers. Go ahead and put your hands down. They're gonna go through a lot this week. And again, in reference to the different units that are represented, we've changed the curriculum just a little bit to represent more of a multi-agency effort towards critical incidents. So, they'll be trained in water survival courses, they'll have OC exposure. They'll have, they'll be certified in first aid CPR. They have multiple different lesson plans. Chief Plack was there today to open it up with ethics. We also have drug recognition course, gangs courses. Some of our scenarios include, oh, we can't talk about that yet, can we? Sorry, guys. We, I am on the spot. We have some things that they don't know about and sometimes that they might think they're sleeping that they could be woke up. But we'll be all over the place for the next week. The days for them start at 06:00 and they end at about 10:00 or 11:00 PM. And then we put them to bed and sometimes they get to stay in bed that whole time. We stay at Donort High, we eat there, we sleep there, we run there, we fall down, we sometimes cry and fake injuries and get better. But it's gonna be a great week. Lot of support. You'll see a lot of volunteers onboard. We have the United States Marine Corps represented. We have some Army also. They couldn't make it the duration of the day. And we have, we have staff from several other agencies in town. So, we're doing great. It's a great program and, like I said, everybody's invited to the graduation ceremony at 3:00 PM. We also do a glory run through town on Saturday at 10:00 AM, sort of parade style. So, if you hear us out there yelling, that's what's going on then.
Several of the explorers are going into the military shortly?
They are. If you're signed up, raise your hand. It's really a great program. Like I said, for the amount of time it's been going, we have the privilege of seeing where they are now. And, you know, a lot of them go on to do amazing things. Very rewarding for us. Advisor Nate Trim, I'm sure where he's at. He's been in it for several years. He's another academy commander. He's been helping since '06. Army guy, that's why I made fun of the Army, by the way. It's sort of a song, I think. Also Derek Yang, he went to the very first academy in 2003 and now he's back as an advisor. Elizabeth Mitchell was one of the first explorers that was an explorer when I took over the program back then. So, like I said, it's very interesting to see how they grow up and I feel pretty privileged to be a part of that.
And didn't the youth, didn't they write their own code of ethics?
They do. We have a code of ethics. It's very similar to what was just read and we have all sorts of cadences and things that we yell along the way.
I think that's very impressive.
Thank you. They did it.
I'd just like to say that over the eight years I've been on the council, I've watched you grow this program and to see what it is today is an amazing feat. And I'm just so proud that our community supports this kind of a program that we can offer to the kids. And I'm just really, really extremely humbled by what you guys have put together with the volunteers and you guys are gonna have a great week and it'll be something you're gonna cherish for probably the rest of your life. So, enjoy every lovely moment.
And that's really a great point that Bear's mentioning. All the adult staff are volunteers. They're all people that are using their own vacation time or they've manipulated their schedule in some way to allow them to be present for, in a lot of cases, for a week. I know Nate and Derek are taking vacation time to be here. Also, as you mentioned, with the support of the city, this will be sort of my job for the next week, so I'm allowed to shift my schedule over to do that. But yes, definitely a ton of support throughout the community.
Okay, well, thank you for the impromptu presentation. You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So, before we move on to the less ceremonial part of our agenda this evening, I would give it about a minute and a half. If you choose not to stay for the rest of the meeting, you may exit at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you all. That was very orderly. So, we're gonna move on. We have another, actually, kind of a feel-good item on our agenda today. It's a presentation of the completion of the emergency management performance grant expenditures, followed by a 10-minute recess to view the boom truck and reader board purchases. So... Public comment on what? We could do that. Is there any public comment on what I just mentioned? Is that what you meant? Oh, I see what you're saying. It's been suggested that perhaps we hold our regular public comment session at this time, in that some of you may be here for public comment and not really care to participate in the feel-good moment I just mentioned. In that some of you may be here for public comment and not really care to participate in the, in the feel-good moment I just mentioned. So, that's a good idea, Kelly. Thank you. So, under the public comment period, any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be a part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to just three minutes. So, public comment period is open. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make comment? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name's Kirk Olson. I live in Delnort County. I work for the Romiano Cheese Company. Hey, has anybody wondered what's going on down there? Oh. Well, what's going on at the cheese factory is, over our whole process last year, in 2011, we put in the whey drying, the protein drying system. And now we're getting ready to put in the lactose drying system. So, we purchased the property next door. The building's gone. The tenants have been relocated. We've made some contracts with Mike Young, the engineer, GNR Construction George, North Ridge Electric. And we're gonna use as much local people as we can. We're hopefully gonna build a lactose plant there. And over the years that we have continued, so the first step we're gonna do is, we talked to, in April, we had Eugene and we had Tom and Eric come through. And we're gonna do some infrastructure work. So we're gonna see some improvements in our own wastewater. And hopefully, we won't impact the city too much when we do that. So those permits have been in. Hopefully, they'll be released. We're also doing the permitting process for the building. And so you're gonna start seeing some of those things. And so I thought I'd take this opportunity, on behalf of Romiano Cheese, who's represented here, and it's a nice public forum, so that some of the questions will be laid to rest exactly what we're doing. The building's probably gonna be about 8,000 square feet. Several years ago, and before the planning commission, we got a height approval of 60 feet. We're not gonna go 60 feet. We've pared it down to about 40 feet. And we hope that that doesn't impact the skyline of Crescent City. And so, on behalf of the Crescent City people and Romiano Cheese, hopefully, it's gonna be a lot of income that comes into the community. Every day now, we have 40,000 gallons of this liquid whey that we've taken the protein out of that we land apply. And so that's about six to eight truckloads a day that have to leave. And now we're gonna make about three to four truckloads a week of powder. So, and we're gonna hopefully sell that product. So we're gonna hire four new employees. And we're gonna retain, hopefully, some more money for the community.
That's exciting. This is, I really appreciate you being here tonight. Any questions from the council? We don't usually do that with public comment, but in this particular case, is there any clarification?
And hopefully, and I know I've used my time, but hopefully, in those of you that haven't, a lot of you are true to the, the protein side, the lactose is gonna be equally impressive, trust me.
Oh, that's great.
I think that's just a wonderful, wonderful thing. We have it in our community and people can come and, and view things like that. And of course, when we upgrade the wastewater, that's gonna be state-of-the-art stuff again. And I really look forward to working with Tom and Eric and stuff on that, too. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate that. Any other public comment? Yes, sir?
Jesse Salisbury, Crescent City. What an awesome company, huh? I mean, just... I'm not sure, I know the last time that they were doing a pretreatment, they were talking about maybe the water was so clear that they could even use it to water maybe the Peterson Park. I wonder if we could look into that again? I mean, it would be nice if that stuff never even hit the treatment plant. I know they're one of our major users at the treatment plant. I know I've been gone a little while. I come back to look, look again at some of the, a couple of the programs that I wanted to do years ago. One was getting the kids a BMX park. We promised them one years ago. It was put on hold because of all of the stuff going on over at the sewage treatment plant and all that dirt. There was actually a BMX park there. And they took the dirt out. Anyway, I'd like to see, see if we could talk about that. And a simple pet project that I brought up years ago was burning a couple tees in front of what used to be, well, is now Chase Bank, it used to be Wells Fargo. When we looked into it, all of the people that had businesses on the side streets there, they said, "Oh, we don't need it." Yeah, they had, they had plenty of parking. "We don't need it over there." But we really did need it in front of the bank because there's only like maybe three spots to park there. And it's like the most used bank in town. And how they ever got a bank put on Third Street with no parking lot is just crazy. But when, when it was finally implemented, the parking tees that got burned on the ground were put over to, on the side where nobody needed the parking and not where we decided we were gonna put them. So I'd like to look at that again. And I love the new timer.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment?
Mr. Romiano. Hello, everyone. Barrett Romiano, Romiano Cheese. Been doing this for 41 years. Kinda excited about it this time. Most of the time, we were always defending ourselves. And now we're, you know, doing a pretty good job, I think, on Ninth and East Street. Our, I think our goal here is to process this lactose stream. And what will come off of that is, as you said, it will be a clear water. It'll be potable water. You can drink it. You can, we're gonna use it actually probably in the plant to wash, rinse, stuff like that. And we're very excited about this project. It's, it's very expensive and we hope that the council will support us in this endeavor because I think it'll be good for the community. And I think our track record has showed a positive path that we've done for, for the, like I said, I've been here for 41 years. So it's been a growing pain. And Mike Young's not here today, but I could always tell a little story. He gave me the first cease and desist order in 1977. Yeah, 'cause I was a non-conforming youth. Well, that didn't work out too good for him. But anyway, yeah. I hope you guys are excited as we are about it. I mean, we're recognized around the world as one of the finest cheese manufacturers. And I hope you guys understand that we are international. We sell in almost every country in the world. And couldn't do it without the great people of Crescent City and, and our great milk producers. I mean, this is the greatest milk shed there is, there is anywhere in the world. So, thank you very much for your time. And I hope you're as excited as I am about it.
Thank you. We're getting there. Okay, I'd ask for other public comments. Any other public comments? On any matter? Yes, sir?
I'm Joby Romiano. I'm Barrett's son. And I'm also with Romiano Cheese.
You know, I didn't even think about doing the three plus three plus three plus three.
And if anybody has any questions like for us, you know, feel free to call us or email us or whatever you'd like to do, too. Because this is a really advanced project that we're doing. It's, there's one other plant that's currently doing it in the nation, up in Wisconsin. But other countries in the world are doing it. And we're creating a value-added byproduct, basically, with what we're doing here. It's a sugar substitute. It's used in infant formulas and pharmaceuticals. It can also be used in confection. So if you're making bakery goods and stuff like that, it's easily digestible for infants is the most important thing about it. And a lot of the liquid product that comes out of cheese, the whey, is made up of this lactose. So, really, after we're all done, we'll be able to polish the water like everybody's been talking about and actually become more sustainable. So roughly, we'll be able to recover right around 30,000 to 40,000 gallons of water a day. So that's even more than, right around what we're using currently. So, I mean, it's gonna be almost a wash. So it's really, really cool stuff. And the technology is great. And we're also utilizing all the local talents that we have that are available. So, you know, it's just a pro for the whole community. And it's gonna be, receive worldwide recognition when we're done, for sure. I was just in Sacramento the other day. And we won a gold medal with the dry jack. We received a third medal in, with our butter. And also a third with the pepotto, our dry jack with peppercorns. So, you know, we are getting out there and getting recognized in everywhere. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I, I love going out of the community and going into a grocery store and seeing Romiano Cheese. I couldn't be more proud when I see that outside of our area. So, and then also, I just wanted to say, you know, you and I have talked several times. And I just really want to thank you guys for reaching out and, you know, working with our staff so that we can, you know, just be a partner with you because that's really what it's all about. So, you know, just the communication has been great. So thanks.
That's been a really big goal for me, too, is just to be proactive, especially with this project. We've been through a few projects now. And this is just a continuation of what we were currently doing with our whey protein plant. It's just another stream that there's pipes and there they go into the other thing to dry, basically.
Congratulations.
It's really cool. So thank you. Appreciate it. And that was a good idea about the water, you know? I never even thought of that.
You know, I, I'd like to say that I appreciate your catchphrase about the water recovery is a wash. I thought, that's really clever.
Fun intended.
Thank you again for being here.
We'll be back.
Good. We look forward to that. Okay, anybody else want to have public comment that hasn't already done so? Okay, again, you're welcome to come see the boom truck here in a second. So we're gonna move on to item number seven now. And again, let me re-announce this one more time. Presentation of the completion of the Emergency Management Performance Grant expenditures, followed by a ten-minute recess to view the boom truck and reader board purchases. Mr. Plotsen?
Yeah, Mayor, Members of Council, I'd like to have Mr. Weir present this item. And before he does, just a couple of comments. A lot of times the council receives projects, you know, they can act on them, give some direction. We move forward and, and implement. We like to stop, take a pause, and bring it back to the council and show you the implementation, you know, the kind of the completion, kind of check that off, off our list. And I think this is a, a good way to do it. Presentation tonight on our security systems. And then also a couple of larger purchases that I think you'll be impressed with. So, Eric?
Good evening, Mayor Holly, members of the council. Yes, these are, these are always my favorite presentations because it is, it's talking about what we've accomplished and, and some of the, the things we've been able to do over the past year. This one's even a little bit better, in my opinion, because I get to introduce some of the team that's, that's behind the scenes most of the time. So with that, I'd like to introduce Tom Roemsberg, the utility manager for the city. I'd like to introduce Jason Wiley, the public works maintenance manager. Jason Borges, the lead fleet mechanic for the city. And last but not least, Fritz Ludeman, the IT administrator for the city. These gentlemen were, were responsible for getting this project done on time and within budget. And with that, I will introduce Tom to give the presentation.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Eric, and city council, and mayor. Eric did promise us a much larger crowd. It seems to have weaned off a little bit. He, he said they were all, when we came in, he said, "Look, they're all here for your presentation."
Well, they're probably waiting for us outside.
I guess. Yeah, I'm sure they are. So this is an update to a presentation that came before you back in January. And this is a feel-good because this is something we've gotten done. A little bit of revisiting what the program was, just the basics. What is the purpose of the Emergency Management Performance Grant? It's for state, local, tribal, to, really for emergency preparedness. In the fiscal year 2000, a lot of money in the state, 200, 332 million. All the way up to Delnort County, 130. And the update shows for this coming fiscal year, slightly higher number. I think it's 131 and $2. I don't know what the $2 is for, but, but a very similar number. Yeah, the project requires a match, 50% match. And the way it works, it's a pass-through through the county and then it goes through a process. Eric calls it the Fab Five, where, where the, the projects are submitted and it goes to the chief, the chief of police, the fire chief, the emergency coordinator, the sheriff, and then the rural fire department. And they help look at what's submitted and screen and select projects. So if we go to the next slide, history. There have been some good projects, at least since I've been with the city. But he went too fast. Where'd you go? There you go. 2012, emergency generator, which is parked over at the wastewater plant. And it is sized in case the main generator runs, that we can back up some critical systems. It somehow did get some use over the last week when there was a generator. It actually did, I think it powered the concert, actually, that was at the fair. So that was a backup for a community need. So very important piece of equipment. And then we move into fiscal year 13. We did the first phase of, really, of starting to get some security at our water and wastewater cameras, alarm, fencing, access control, getting these critical infrastructure facilities secure. Next one. Then we go to where we're at now and really the update. The last time we presented is, was the next phase of the grant. And those were for more improvements at the wastewater plant for security and the water system, trailer-mounted board, and then barricades and signage. So, kind of the milestones and the steps we went through on this project. We went, we presented to the city council back in January. Really, the authorization to execute the pass-through funding agreement. That was done in January. Then the next step, we took the project through a FEMA approval process. It's really a screening required for the federal grants. As we move on to April, we brought forth a contract with Hitec to do the security improvements for Phase Two. And Phase Two security was completed in May. And the final piece is the purchasing of the new equipment, some of which you'll see at the break, was completed in June. Yeah, and now I have the pleasure of turning this over to the best IT person north of San Francisco, south of Portland, Mr. Fritz Ludeman.
Wait, where?
That's how we used to refer to the clam chowder here.
So, I think we can all agree that securing, securing our water and wastewater facility is important for public health. So, improvements commenced in April of 2014 to implement what we call the Phase Two security enhancements. Essentially, was to build on Phase One from the year before. The vendor completed work at the end of May. So for security reasons, I don't want to go into too much detail. But among the improvements included more alarm and camera coverage at critical facilities and increased access control. The pics that you see at the bottom of this slide are the new PTZ camera that we have in the front of the wastewater treatment plant. And on the right is an access control reader. This is an example that we have for our water department at city hall.
Wall of the, outside of the?
It's actually inside the wall. It's inside the perimeter. So, one enhancement that is key for our staff is remote access. And this is an example of what designated staff can view. Staff also has a measure of control over some cameras, depending on those cameras capabilities, i.e. PTZ. These, these feeds are also available on designated staff workstations. And, and most are available to call out staff on city-issued mobile devices. So, they can view them, call out, staff can view them, you know, from home or what have you if the need arises. That's pretty much it on that. Any questions? Then I'm gonna hand it over to Jason Wiley to talk about the next thing.
Camera technology actually came in handy this last weekend. And city crew had their hand in a lot of the, setting up the security. They did a lot of rebuilding fences and restringing barbed wire and razor wire. So, a lot of good talent on the city crew to pull that off. So, we had an opportunity with this grant to purchase a signboard. Some may wonder why would the city need the signboard? What happens is we'll have water main breaks or service line leaks near or in the highway. And there's a standard for Caltrans that you, you need this, this, this signboard to protect traffic and city crews, or whatever crew may be working in the highway. In the past, we've been fortunate, you know, if you have a main break and it happens during working hours, you can sometimes coordinate with Hemmingson and, and be able to get one. There have been times where we've accommodated that situation working with Caltrans. Having this at our disposal gives us a peace of mind to be able to, no matter when it happens, you know, because it doesn't seem to wait for us. It just happens whenever. We'll be able to respond to that situation. So that's pretty nice. So, an emergency situation out on the highway, we'll have that. Also, for functions, maybe an event that takes place, whether it be a tsunami, earthquake, it'll be, I think, a... it'll be, I think, a nice tool for us to have. So, we were able to pick that up, city matched that with three different funds for the 9,000. So, it made it much more affordable. We were also able to acquire crowd control rails and plasticades and cones. The timing of it was real nice, right before the Fourth of July, we were able to utilize those crowd controls all along Front Street, and it made it much more manageable, easier to put out, and didn't use up all our resources as far as barricades. It seemed to work real well. They're easy to store, you could stack them, you can combine them. We've already used them, utilized them around concrete jobs. When we're able to block off a whole section, one, it'll protect people from walking through it, but also, kind of, it worked pretty effectively keeping people out of it, you know, the initials didn't seem to pop up as much. So, that's already proven to be very nice, or whether we're digging a ditch somewhere, it's nice to be able to barricade that off. The plasticades, the barricades, the plastic barricades, they're a nice addition. We use them along the parade route as well. What's nice about them is they're not as heavy as the metal barricades we had. I've had many blood blisters from those metal barricades snapping on your fingers, and these are pretty nice, they got a handle right on top, so, as well as slots on the bottom for sandbags for when the wind picks up. So, they're a nice, nice addition, as well as the, all the cones with the city logo on it. So, that was a nice pickup for the city. It was a need and very glad to have it. So, let's see, what do we have here? All right, we kind of covered cones, barricades, and the cost. What we would like to acquire, and maybe this is where Eric would like to step in here a little bit, is next year, it looks like the grant's going to go forward, and one of the ideas or desires that we have is a hazardous response trailer. There are situations where we have oil spills, gas spills, you name it, and to have some equipment with all the tools that we need in it, the resources, and just hook up and go, I think it'll be good for our community, easier on the workers, have all the suits and whatever attire, the PPNE inside the trailer. So, that's going to be the hope and the push for this next year. This is the boom truck that we are replacing. It's about 30 years old. It's served its purpose, there's been a few scary times in it. The bucket, I've been in it a few times, and it's a narrow bucket, you got to climb up and over and to get in it. It's a bit awkward to get in and out, you got to be pretty limber, and if you drop your last wire nut down into the bottom, you got to have some sort of Houdini trick to be able to get down in there and get that back up. So, it's good to see this getting replaced, and I believe you'll see that on the next photo here.
Looks like you could put it in the Sea Cruise.
Yeah, yeah.
Classic car.
It's classic, yeah. So, yes, this is a very welcomed addition. This is our new boom truck. It has more features, it has more capabilities on how it functions, and the lift, it goes up higher, and there's even a feature in there, if a person were to have some problems up top, if they were to go up in the boom, you can manually control that at the bottom to bring them down, if there was a health issue or whatever. Or, yeah, that, you know, could be a bad thing, too. One thing I do, I would like to share is, behind all these purchases, Jason Borges here, he was very instrumental in doing a lot of his homework. We came together as a team, but he did a lot of the legwork, he did a lot of comparing, a lot of quotes, and so, he made a lot of this happen, and so, it was good to have that happen behind the scenes, and we just kind of pulled together and seen the needs, and it was nice to get this equipment, have a estimate, and then come under that estimate, and so, and have all the features that these pieces of equipment have. When you go out there, I guess we'll, at the appropriate time, we'll go out there and look at this equipment, you'll see that, I call them monster garage, they had their hands on this truck and installed all kinds of neat LEDs over the cab and all throughout to make it more safe, and they did an excellent job. So, I guess with that, I'm done here. And any questions, you can ask Eric.
Okay, any questions? Good job. So, seeing no questions by the council, any questions from the audience about this? We'll make this public comment. Okay, seeing none, I think the next matter, Mr. Palazzo, is to go take a look?
Yes, and my understanding, the equipment is to the back of the building?
Okay.
Is that correct? The back parking lot.
Okay.
So, if we can...
So, as a technical matter, I don't think we're going to adjourn the meeting because we're still on this item, we're just going to...
Correct, we're going to recess out to that location, take a look at it, and ask the public, public to join us, go out the door and cut around, council exit out the back.
I guess I'll apologize for those that may be watching us on television, there may be some blank seats for just a few minutes, but we'll be right back. Okay?
Thank you.
Let's go. And you'll be seeing that on the streets here very soon, and we're excited about the increased safety and the increased efficiency as a result of this new equipment. So, thank you very much to staff, Mr. Palazzo and staff, for that presentation. I appreciate that a lot, that's a...
It's a good team effort by all in the Public Works Department, and I know they're very pleased to have the new equipment, and it's going to help do our jobs a lot easier.
Great. Okay, so, we've moved through communications already, public hearings, we have none. Continuing business. Number eight, the council will consider and approve an agreement with Stover Engineering for architectural design and, architectural and design services for the city of Creston City Fire Hall seismic retrofit project, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement and take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Palazzo?
Yeah, I'd like to have Mr. Weir present this item.
Thank you. Mr. Weir?
Good evening, Mayor Holly, members of the council. I would like to thank you guys again for going out and experiencing some of the equipment that we have. It's nice to have the right equipment to do the job, and as you saw, the crews are excited to have it as well. So, anyway, it's appreciated. So, yes, so, this item, we are moving forward on the FEMA grant that the city received to seismically retrofit the city's fire hall. We put out a proposal. The proposal was advertised in most of the consulting trade journals, as well as was given to over 20 consultants. We received five proposals back. The proposals were received from Vanner out of Sacramento, from Stover Engineering, from Pression Associates out of Sacramento, Lee Tromble, Jeff Mitchell, as well as Whitchurch from Fortuna. The five proposals were evaluated by a team of seven people that included a diverse range of knowledge and expertise from members of the fire department, the engineering team with Mike Young, myself. We had, we also had Kevin Tutman, as well as Lori Price, the Public Works Director from the city of Brookings, evaluate the proposals. The proposals were narrowed down to three proposals, three teams, I should say, that were interviewed, and then from the interview, the choice was Stover Engineering. Stover Engineering clearly demonstrated that they had done their homework, that they were excited about the project, that they had the capability to take it on, not only from a structural seismic aspect, but also from an architectural component. They teamed up with Mattson Valera Architects out of Humboldt County. They were here and really demonstrated the ability to perform the project, and we felt that they were the best team to give us a complete project, not only from the seismic design, but also evaluate the fire hall from an architectural point to make sure that sure that we were in compliance with ADA. So, what's before you tonight is to sign an agreement with Stover Engineering for approximately $104,000 to complete the seismic design and retrofit of the fire hall. With that, I'll open it up to the council.
Can I just ask if the online, can they see? Because this just has the county of Del Norte up. Okay, so why can't we? All right, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that it was on there.
Okay, yeah, because you gave us a lot of excellent background materials. And I sure appreciate that. So, any other questions or comments? Technical questions or comments of Mr. Weir?
Just excited that we're getting, moving forward on this project. It's really something we need to do.
Yeah, I only had one question when I was looking through the materials. And that was some concern that the laws may have changed between the time we originally planned this project and the time we're finally getting around to do the final analysis and plans. Do you anticipate big changes as a result of new ADA laws, for example?
Well, no, because the, you know, the project was studied from a concept standpoint. And so, what Mr. Stover and his team had pointed out is that the, actually, the laws did change. And so, they were going to approach this design with those new laws incorporated in their design. In fact, the new laws state that the ADA compliance is more geared to what you're actually working on versus a full building compliance. So, if anything, they've changed in our favor.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, but I would like to talk about the schedule a little bit as well. So, we should be back to the council hopefully in January sometime with the fully designed project. And then we anticipate starting construction somewhere in the spring for construction during the summer with the completion next fall.
I do have one question. So, we've also partnered with Elk Valley Rancheria. And how will that work with what we're doing here?
Well, the timing is really good as far as the partnership with the Elk Valley Rancheria project. As some of the stipulations within that grant say that we need to start construction, I think it's by April of next year. And so, really, the tight timeframe coincides with the, with this design effort. And so, if they're incorporated, then we'd be looking to possibly look towards Stover and his team to incorporate that aspect within the design.
And you were, Chris DeStewart at Elk Valley worked very diligently along with Eric and Emily and Eric Taylor and Lori, our CDBG consultant, put that application together. They get submitted, and it's in for review. So, keeping our fingers crossed that we do receive that grant.
And once again, I think we should acknowledge and thank Elk Valley for coming to us with that proposal. It's very generous of them.
Definitely. And I also would like to thank Ward Stover as when we're working through some of the details of that project, I engaged Ward with anticipation that we'd be coming to the council tonight to make sure that he knew the details of that. And we talked about some of the aspects of it to make sure that it was a viable project to be included. So, also, Ward is here tonight. And just like to thank him for his efforts, not only in his proposal for this project but also with the help for that application.
Okay, I was going to ask Ward. Ward, did you want to address the council? You have anything to add? No? Okay, very good. It's going well for you so far. So, any public comment on this matter? Any public comment on the agreement? Yes, sir.
Sorry, just a little clarification, Jesse Salisbury. If it's going to be $104,000, $104,000 just to, for the engineering and architectural, I mean, for that part of it, do we have any idea how much the actual project's going to cost us? I mean, we looked at the different, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to, you know, skin a cat.
I believe we do have an estimate.
$600,000. $600,000, okay.
Is that?
And that's, is this like a bracket system we're putting in it? Or, I mean, do we have any idea of what?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what type of, what type of a system are we going to use? I mean, there's different types of systems used to retrofit buildings.
Well, they had some rough plans, and those are the ones that they're going to finalize coming through. I don't know that we are prepared to answer the technical questions right now. But that's a good point. I'm sure that, part of the idea is that you're contracting with another architectural firm that is, you know-
Well, I mean, for us to be able to come up with a price of $600,600, we have to know what we're doing.
Right.
I would think.
Yeah.
I'd like to clarify that maybe at a future meeting.
Sure. I think you'll find some of it on the web too when you read this. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Salisbury, you can contact Mr. Weir tomorrow.
Actually, the $686 was a grant that we received to pay, to help pay for that. It's more than, isn't the overall project estimated to be more than?
Yes, please, Mr. Weir.
I just wanted to be clear now that that number's thrown out there.
Yeah, so, the city received a grant for $686,000, $966 for the, from FEMA. The city has a required match of, I believe, 25%. So, the total project amount is in the neighborhood of right around $900,000. So, the estimated cost of the project from the preliminary concept studies that was performed was somewhere around 750, to use rough numbers, for the construction costs. So, when you add the design costs in, we're still within budget. But, you know, the final estimate won't be actually known until we get a little bit further on into the design of the project to know the details. The concept design was to have a steel moment frame placed on the bay doors themselves and then to remove a lot of the current siding which doesn't have any shear value or lateral strength to it and replace it with shear walls throughout the building. So, then you'll have that lateral strength that you need as well as a new roof diaphragm. So, the concept of the project is known. Now, we're going to shift to get into the detailed design, which once we get a little bit further, then we'll have a more firm estimate on the actual construction cost. But we do feel we do have the proper amount of money to support the design and the project itself.
Thank you. You took the words right out of my mouth. I appreciate that. Okay, any other public comment?
I would move to approve the agreement with Stover Engineering for architectural and design services for the City of Crescent City Fire Hall Seismic retrofit project and authorize the city manager to assign the agreement and, assign the agreement. Has been reviewed by our attorney?
Yes, it has.
Okay, that's my motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement? Any other discussion? Okay, very good. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastinow?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes. Okay, thank you again for that presentation. Under new business, we are going to consider and adopt Resolution Number 2014-31 implementing stage two of the city's water shortage contingency plan as required by the emergency regulations adopted by the State Water Resources Control Board. Mr. Palazzo?
Mayor Holly, members of the council, at our last meeting, Mr. Weir gave a presentation on the new state regulations for water conservation. What this resolution does is implement those regulations, you know, kind of outlines, you know, what our requirements are. In the past week or so, Mr. Weir and Ms. Scott have been working on, you know, some, public information to our customers. And I think we want to talk about that a little bit and just outline what is in the resolution.
Sure. Mayor Holly, members of the council? One more, one more time. So, yes, this is the, this is the State Water Resources Board statewide mandatory water conservation effort that's being enacted throughout the state of California. Let me bring up here our, the tower point that we showed you last time. It's always a little, it's always a little hard from the podium to... That would be, that would be outstanding. All right, we got it up and running. So, state boards statewide mandatory water conservation regulations. So, we kind of went over this last time, but just a refresher for people that are just getting up to speed, especially over the internet watching this meeting. On July 15th, the state adopted a statewide regulation to increase water conservation. This water regulation is really intended to restrict the outdoor irrigation use statewide but also is really just the best management practices, at least from my opinion, on just smart water use, you know? It's, the regulations include, you know, equipping your hoses with automatic shut-off nozzles, not washing your car with just an open hose, so you have to have a nozzle on it, so you just don't waste water. And then what's before you tonight is for the City of Crescent City to actually adopt the resolution that will implement stage two of our water shortage contingency plan, which has all of these same regulations that the state is imposing. So, what is stage two of our water shortage contingency plan? Well, all Crescent City water users shall not irrigate outdoors between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. And again, those are just best management. So, if you water during the day, during the hottest part of the day, a lot of the water is just wasted due to evaporation, evaporation. So, the best time to water is at night, so it can actually soak into the soil and water your plants or lawn. Don't allow the water to run off of your lawns onto hardscapes so that it just is wasted and goes into the storm drain. Don't wash off your sidewalks or driveways or other hard surfaces. Do not fill or refill swimming pools. Equip all your hoses with shut-off nozzles. And then ensure that if you have any ornamental type fountains or water features that they have a recycling system in them, so the water's just not wasted after it's used in the fountain. And then promptly repair all leaks to plumbing fixtures or water lines or sprinkler systems. Additionally, for commercial car washes, they need to be equipped with a water recycling system. And then restaurants, as is common in Southern California, are going to be required not to just give people water that don't necessarily want it. People will need to ask for it. Hotels and motels should also provide notice that we're in a water emergency. So, what's it mean for the City of Crescent City? Well, we're responsible for the enforcement of the regulation. We are also going to increase, be responsible for increased monthly reporting. And then the, our main job is just to educate and inform the customers and our employees so that we can be knowledgeable about these regulations and that, and that people know what they need to do. So, with that, we could pop out of the presentation. And so, with the help of one of the city's newest employees, Kimmy Scott, who's been very instrumental in putting this, this information together, this is a lot of what we're going to do as a city to inform the public. So, what this is, and back a little bit, so, what's going to be before you is, this is a notice that we're going to put out. This bullet points the requirements that are within the stage two. You'll see an ad that's going to be very similar to this placed in the newspaper so that people are informed of what they need to do. We'll have a press release. This press release will be available at the water department as well as at city hall. And then all of this information will be placed on our website. So, when people go to the website, they can be informed on exactly what the regulation says and how it applies to them. This, and it's a little bit hard to see on this present, this presentation, but this is the wording that'll be placed in the, on everyone's water bill. So, when you receive the water bill, it comes in almost like a postcard type of bill form. This wording will be placed on everyone's water bill. And what it basically does is one informs them of the basic regulations, then it also instructs them on how to go to the website and who to contact for more information. These little flyers will be available on the website. So, we're going to send a letter to each of the motels and the restaurants where they can download this flyer and then print it off. So, this is the information that they'll need to provide to their customers. This flyer came from the Save Our Water website. And then this is the flyer that can be placed in all restaurants. So, people are made aware that it's not the restaurant's choice not to give people water or the City of Crescent City. It's actually a state mandate. And this is some information about it. And then one decision that I'd like to get some policy direction on from the council tonight is we have a fairly large fountain that's located in the, in the Price Mall area there, where the old tsunami landing was. And so, with council direction, we, we can receive direction to actually shut down that fountain while we're in this state of, state of emergency.
The water in the fountain is recycled.
It is recycled?
It is recycled. We do get, get some loss when the wind blows. It does tend to go in different places besides in the fountain.
We have a fairly strong north wind from time to time, as you might know. And yes, the, a lot of the hardscape around the fountain is affected.
So, I would, I'm just concerned about if the fountain is empty, will that invite kids to play on it?
It could.
Is there a timer, is there a timer on that? We can turn it off at late at night for a few, for some hours?
You know, there's not an actual timer, so we'd physically have to go out and do that. The other thing we can do is, you know, just be conscious of it. And, you know, if the wind is blowing, we could just turn it off at, during those times and try to be as conscious and as mindful as we can of just any wasted water from it.
You could just keep it off and keep the pool filled. That way, it'll keep people from waiting in and climbing on it, but-
And just circulate it from time to time.
But it wouldn't have the wind problem. Because I've gone by there, and, you know, it's over there by the other walls. It's, the wind blows a lot.
It's a great fountain, although it is fairly tall. And so, when the wind blows, that water does carry.
You know, maybe for now, what we do is try and just, you know, turn on and off as the weather dictates, you know, if the wind's blowing and, you know, it's a nice feature. It is recycled.
Sure. So, yeah, the fountain is in compliance and it doesn't waste water.
It is in compliance, doesn't waste water, but it is, you know, kind of a, you know, I guess, you know, the example.
We're in the midst of our busiest tourist season, and I'd hate to have this happen before September.
But we do want to make sure the public knows, you know, it is recycled, you know, it is recycled, you know, through that fountain. It is compliance, but-
I was just going to say, I couldn't read this quickly, but in the ads that are going to be, can you go back to the one that's going to be in the newspaper? And then maybe on the water bill as well? But there's nothing on, well, I haven't read it. But is there anything on here that says this is not a city, new city requirement that we are doing this based on a state mandate?
The press release does.
Right, but the press release isn't going to be the ad in the newspaper. I think the ad in the newspaper needs to have that.
Sure, so we could put, we could put this statement, yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think the public needs to know that we are responding to a state mandate. We are not choosing to implement these on our whim.
The other thing that's important to note is that this isn't a water rationing. You know, this is just a, you know, kind of the first step in water conservation, and really, it's just best management.
And I've, I've talked to a few people about it, and they're instantly like, you know, confused or think it's stupid, you know, whatever their reaction was. So, I thought the more we can inform them that we are responding to a state mandate, the better. And I would say that on the, what's going to go on the water bill as well.
That's good.
Maybe we could just, if we're going to keep the fountain at Price Mall going, we could put in parentheses at the city, and the, under the ornamental water features, we could put in parentheses that that's recycled water. Just so that if people notice that we keep that fountain open, that it is a recycled water fountain.
Sure.
Let people know it is recycled water.
Yeah.
Make sure we're, know we're compliant.
And have we done any specific outreach to the hotels and restaurants?
Oh, yeah. I tell you, I went to dinner the other night. The hotel said, if you'd like water, you have to ask. They don't serve it.
So, word is starting to spread. Yeah, the city hasn't officially reached out, but we are going to. We're going to send a letter to every motel and restaurant and inform them of the new regulations as well as where they can go to get the information to provide to their customers.
Okay, is there any other, are there any other questions for Mr. Weir? Okay, so we'll open this up for public comment. This is something that we're intending to adopt a resolution. Any public comment on this resolution?
I just wanted to ask about the apartment complexes. I mean, we don't get water bills, so how are, how would we go about letting the apartment complex people know?
Well, it's been on the news that it's a drought. And we had a lot, at our last council meeting, if they read it in the paper, it'll be on the radio, but they don't water the lawns at the apartments, so the apartment owners would do that management. And about washing cars, management's going to have to watch that, I guess.
Yeah, but still, it's a good point.
Yeah, it is a good point.
We, yes, and may I recommend, maybe the city staff, is we send letters to the restaurants, we'll send it to the apartment complex. the restaurants, we'll send it to the apartment complexes as well.
That's a good idea.
And just ask them to post, go to the website, they can post it in the laundry rooms or the public information board, just make that recommendation to everybody.
They have community rooms there, too?
They have community rooms, and we just give them a letter, get them the website that this information is on.
That's a good idea.
That's a good point, Mr. Salvo, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council.
So, um, I will make a motion to adopt resolution 2014-31, a resolution of the city council of the city of Crescent City implementing stage two of the city's water shortage contingency plan as required by the emergency regulations adopted by the state water resources control board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to consider and adopt, to adopt, I should say, resolution number 2014-31. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalom?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastinot?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly?
Yes. Okay, thank you. That's our business for this evening, but we're going to move on to city council items. Legislative matters, we do have a couple of items on legislative matters, Mr. Palazzo?
Mayor Holly, members of the council, the first item on legislative matters is an annual designation of the voting delegate and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. I believe there's three council members attending the conference this year along with myself, uh, so it would be to designate that voting delegate for the conference and alternates.
Thank you. So the first, the first item is to designate a voting delegate, and then the next item is to designate an alternate. Is that one or two?
That, that would be one item, and then the second item, uh, I haven't addressed yet, but that would be the, um, recommendation on the resolutions.
Who's, who's going?
Mayor... I'm going. And I might add that I'm already a, a voting member, um, for the Redwood Empire Division as the president, so we could still have another member, so we'd have two votes per se, from our council.
And, and the answer to your question, too, is that Mr. Palazzo's going to go and Mr. Gastinot and myself are all planning to attend. The difficulty we have is the travel may not be timed right, so that we can be there for the actual votes. As you know, that happens on Friday afternoon, and I think we're going to be winging it back here by then. So, um, I might suggest that, that, that maybe, Catherine, when you vote then, do you get to have the equivalent of two votes, or you just vote on behalf of the...
Um, I don't think I can get away with voting twice.
No, I didn't think so. Okay, so...
Well, what do you vote on as the president?
I, I'm representing the division, our division.
Right, but you guys don't have a separate vote, do you?
Yes, we have, we have one for the res, the resolutions. We only have one, but I do have a vote as the division president. So what I'm saying is, we could have another vote as our council if we want to have somebody stay. It, but Rick's right, it, it is a long way.
I, I might suggest that, that Catherine be designated as the voting delegate for us, because there may be some items that she, you might not be voting on as the voting delegate.
Well, I think we're only, we only have one resolution.
Unless they bring something up at the...
Unless they get enough, um, signatures on the floor, which is kind of hard to do, but they, they could, they could do that, so...
Well, we'll find out in a minute. I don't think it's going to be a controversial resolution. So my suggestion was going to be that Catherine be designated as, as the first voter and Mr. Palazzo, uh, who's still making travel plans, be voted to be the alternate.
He's been the alternate before, so...
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Very good. It's been moved and seconded then, uh, to have the voting delegates, as we've stated. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Or, they need this formalized, don't they? Do we need to poll the vote on this?
No.
They just...
Well, it's not, we don't have a resolution, it's just a, we've, I think, I think that would be adequate.
I think it's just a designation, yeah.
Okay, very good. So the, the first item under legislative matters then is taken care of. The next item is discussion of the 2014 Annual League of California Cities Resolutions Packet. And I believe in that packet, there's only the one resolution, and many of us are already familiar with that resolution. But I would ask, maybe Catherine, you've been most involved with this, can you tell us a little bit about this resolution?
This is the, um, resolution that our division, uh, developed and sent to the League, uh, League of California Cities Board of Directors to have on the agenda for this year's annual conference, and it's regarding illegal marijuana grow. And it's because of the, what, what's done to the water sheds in terms of actually taking water, which is very timely due to the drought, in addition to, um, the pollution that it causes to, um, because of the, um, fertilizers and, uh, what it does to, um, when they're, they poison the, um, different rodents that eat the marijuana, and then what it does to our fisheries, um, the, the fish, fish hatcheries, um, not hatcheries, but the, the fish that are, um, in the streams, uh, along the watershed. So it's, it's, it's wreaking havoc environmentally and economically, and, um, it also is a, a health hazard in terms of the watershed itself, so...
It's also a huge, uh, drain on law enforcement and resources, um, to any of the counties that, um, is, that are being affected.
And, and they're finding that it's not just in our division, it's throughout the state, so, actually throughout the nation, but throughout the state, so...
Some of us heard a rather lengthy, uh, workshop on this when we were down in Port Break. And it was, it was really disturbing, the way they just cut a road through, they don't take any, into any account, you know, what's happening with, with erosion and those kinds of things. They leave their equipment there, and not only that, it's, it's always been bad, but it's, it's, it's an increasing problem.
They're, they're dumping garbage and chemicals and it's running into the streams, and it's killing the fish, and...
And, and part of the difficulty, from what I understand, from the, from the people from Arcata and Eureka, is that, um, there's no single agency that's really taking responsibility for cleaning this up. Much of this happens on private property. So is it law enforcement, is it Forest Service, is it Cal Fire? Who, who is it that's going to address it? And it's such a big problem, people are hands-off, in the meantime, the environment's, uh, going downhill in a very rapid way. So I would, I would recommend, uh, we approve, taking action in favor of this resolution, but...
Absolutely.
Do we need a vote?
I, I think we probably should.
I move that, uh, the city of Crescent City chooses to support the, um... There's really no description here. The resolution on the ballot against illegal marijuana grows, um, that will be voted on, uh, at the California League of Cities meeting in September.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to, uh, as a council, support, uh, the resolution that's going to the state, uh, at the League of Cities meeting. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you. City manager report and city council directives, Mr. Palazzo.
I have nothing.
Okay, we're going to go ahead with, uh, the reports from the council. Mr. Ania, would you like to start us off?
Sure, I just have a brief report. Attended the chief's retirement party last week, attended the county fair, and, uh, I wanted to mention that I, I met Mr. Ivan Stolffus this afternoon. He's the guy that's driving the tractor across country for, uh, across America for the wounded heroes. And he will be at, in front of Home Depot on Saturday at about 10:00 AM. And they're going to have a ceremony for him, so hopefully we can, we can attend. It's supposed to be at 10:00 AM on Saturday.
Thank you. Kelly, would you like to say?
Sure. We recently had a chamber board, um, of directors meeting. Sea Cruise is moving along quite nicely. I attended the Delmar County Fair and just wanted to remind everybody that in November there will be a measure on the ballot referred to as Measure F, which will be an increase by a quarter percent in sales tax. It will actually be directed directly to the Delmar County Fair. One of the things I wanted to point out that I learned more about this weekend is that if that measure does not pass, not only does our fair shut down, but the entire fairgrounds will be shut down, um, which would be a huge detriment to our community. Um, I think it'd be, it would turn into probably the biggest blight that we would have. So, um, you know, educate yourself, learn more about Measure F. They have all the information at the fair office. Um, you know, give them a call if you want to, if you want to know more. And also attended Chief Plack's retirement party that, um, the police officers put on. It was very nicely done. I am traveling, uh, to Fortuna to meet with the city manager and the, um, a couple of their Redwood Empire Division people and Sarah Rounds to discuss the possibility of Crescent City hosting, um, our annual fundraiser. And so I will report back after that meeting. And then also, um, we attended, uh, the Sutter, no, I'm not, it's not Sutter, the Healthcare District, uh, Two by Two today, which, uh, included myself and Catherine and Mr. Palazzo, and, uh, Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Hemmingson and Mr., um, Serena, geez, my mind went blank, uh, as well as, uh, Dwayne Reichlin and Terry McNamara from the Healthcare District. And I invited, uh, we're trying to increase dialogue, so I invited the new CEO of Sutter Coast Hospital, as well as, uh, anybody from the board, and Mr. Feller attended the meeting as well, so just continuing to try to foster positive communication between the parties, and I think that's working. Um, we're all becoming more educated and, um, so that was a positive thing. And just wanted to remind everybody that, um, uh, there's two city council positions open in November, and the deadline to file your applications is coming up, so if you have a, a desire to serve our community in a very positive way, um, go see the city clerk. County clerk.
County clerk, very good, thank you.
And that's it, thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you. So I, too, attended the chief's retirement party, and it was very nicely done, and Sergeant Apperson was the, the emcee and did a great job, and had great music and great food, um, and a fun cake. We, um, had the, um, the Bi-Coastal Regional Airport agenda, airport meeting on, um, July 31st this time, and we are on the agenda for, I believe that we are still on the agenda for the, um, California Coastal Commission meeting, um, in September, so that looks like we're still scheduled for that. And then, um, I was at the fair every day, and, um, I hope that, uh, the numbers were up. It looked like it was pretty crowded. The one thing that I was surprised and a little bit shocked about was that they allow smoking, which I thought that the fairgrounds were non-smoking, so I'm hoping that that will be...
There is no smoking allowed.
That's what they told me, and they had little smoking places, air, they had a smoking, special smoking area, so I'm hoping that that can be remediated once the, um, the Measure F gets passed in November. And then I, too, attended the healthcare meeting that, um, Councilmember Shalom mentioned today, so I won't repeat all the details about that, and, um, I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gastinot?
So while we're out checking out the boom truck, Jeff Palmer of the, uh, Chamber texted me and said, "Great job to the city for the barriers and everything that happened down at Fourth of July." So everybody did a great job, just wanted to get that out. I also attended the fair, which I thought there was a lot more people there, and I heard that there were, uh, more people there. And, yeah, we do definitely have to favor, uh, vote in favor of, uh, Measure F to make sure that the fair continues, because Kelly brought up a good point. That will be a big blighted property. We will have no places to hold dances, uh, feasts, dinners, all the other stuff will be gone if the fair goes by the wayside. Uh, I thought Rich was going to steal my thunder here for, uh, Mr. Ivan Stolffas, who's coming over from Manasquah, New Jersey, where he had his tractor in the Atlantic Ocean, and he chose Crescent City to put his tractor in the Pacific Ocean. And that's going to happen after the Home Depot, uh, meet and greet at 10:00 at South Beach at 11:00. So that's when he's going to do it, and we're going to have a big reception for him, and there's going to be, um, honor guard, flags, uh, the whole thing, national anthem. Been a good ceremony for him to complete his, uh, 3,100-mile trip. And he chose Crescent City, uh, because, uh, New Jersey succumbed to Hurricane Sandy and was inundated by its waters, and he heard about our 2011 tsunami and our rebuilding, and that's why he chose Crescent City to come here, because he thought that we had a good bond of recovery, and so he wants to honor that by coming here. And the main thing is that he is, uh, supporting the Wounded Warriors program, and if you want to check out his website, that's helpamericanheroes.com, so check that out, and come out at 11:00 at South Beach, uh, Saturday, August 9th. And, uh, we'll have a big Crescent City welcome for him, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gastinot. I, too, attended the, uh, the party for Chief Plack. It was a very nice affair, um, and we wish him well, of course. Uh, on, on Friday, the 25th, I had the occasion to go to Superior Court and listen to several cases that we have regarding our, our, our fight against blight. And, uh, I appreciate the efforts of staff and our attorneys as we move forward, and I think the community's starting to say good things about, uh, uh, the changes that had have occurred as a result of those efforts. So I, I saw it firsthand in court, and things are moving along. This is not a heavy-handed situation ordinarily. Usually we're working with homeowners to, to fix their problems, and that's, of course, the preferable way to go about things. So anyway, that, that, uh, fight continues. I also attended the fair, and I, I don't know, I had a lot of fun this year at the fair. I don't know, it was, uh, it just, the mood seemed to be really good there. I had occasion to, I spent a couple of hours in the Solid Waste Management Authority booth, and that was fun. And, uh, I also, uh, participated in the Democratic booth. So, um, it was a good afternoon, and, uh, I, too, hope this, uh, this measure passes in, in November. So, I don't see anything more to come before us this evening. We will be, uh, adjourning, and, uh, we'll have our next meeting on Monday, August 18th at 5:00 PM. So thank you all for being here. Meeting's adjourned.